Okay, it's 6:00 PM. We're gonna call the regular monthly meeting of the Chippewa County Board for November 9th to order. Chair Gullickson is on grandpa duty tonight. He's waiting with his hand on the phone for expecting daughter-in-law. So you got me. If we could please stand and pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Hey, let the full call show. Supervisors Thornton, Gullickson. Shirley, you got a bunch in? Okay, alright. Supervisor Ives, Hunt, and McGill are absent, but we do have a quorum. So I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion, questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Are there... We have one member of the public wishing to be heard. Lindsey Brant. You have five minutes.
Chippewa County's vision is a thriving and welcoming community that offers an exceptional quality of life for all residents. Our mission is to offer an exceptional quality of life for all who live, work, and play in Chippewa by supporting social and economic opportunities through a transparent, accountable, fiscally responsible government. Thriving and welcoming, really? Exceptional quality for all, really? You've made it clear that you think you, the Board of Supervisors, are better than, better than state laws, county recommendations. They don't apply to you, apparently. You've made clear that ethics, morals, and common decency are not to be expected of you. What does that say about your county vision? Transparent and accountable, yeah? Your track record on this is pretty bad. That brings the fiscally responsible part into question as well. Your vision is hollow. Your mission does not stand for anything except empty, pandering drivel for everyone. Your actions show your truths. You believe that some people are less than deserving. Your egos marginalize and devalue high-risk populations with your lack of civic pride. Your egos drive your negligence. You are not model citizens, and you are not patriots. You can stand with your hearts on your chests and say whatever you want. That is not what patriotism is. It's about serving your community, not serving yourselves. I make a motion to amend the county vision to your truths. I make a motion to amend and abbreviate the county vision as follows. Chippewa County's vision is a community that offers an exceptional quality of life for some residents, particularly those of means, as a means, to secure further funding. Because you think economic growth holds more value than human life or common decency. How many corpses till the scales tip? When was the last time you updated your liability insurance? Maybe it's time? Later, when you ask if there's anything you could have done to stop the loss of life? Look around at yourselves and remember that you guys were warned about every unnecessary and avoidable death. And that should weigh higher to you than any economic growth. You guys are an embarrassment.
I guess that's the end of our public comments for tonight. We will move on. We will move to the consent agenda. I needed approval of the minutes from October 12th. Rezoning the town of Eagle Point and a county administrator appointment for the Health and Human Services Board. I have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearing for the redistricting. We will open that public hearing.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Randy Schultz, I'm the county administrator. I'm basically just gonna introduce Dennis Falkenberg, who's gonna come up from planning and zoning and run through that were from the previous approved redistricting map.
Good evening. Present the final plan that the redistricting committee forwarded on to the county board. I'm just gonna take a couple steps back on the process this year. Usually, in a redistricting cycle, we're up, we get up to 240 days to work on the process through four different steps that we need to go through. This year, we have, we had 85 days to work on the process. So we had a lot, it was very much abbreviated this year, this time around. But going a little bit through the process, on September 8th, the redistricting committee sent a proposed plan to the county board. And on September 10th, we had received some news from the, from the state that we could break up the prison population between two different supervisory districts. So that presented us a new option. And on September 14th, the county board meeting, we accepted that new tentative plan, which we then forwarded on to the municipalities. At that point, we worked with the different town and city clerks, village clerks, to try to find a solution for the ward plans for each one. During that process, the city of Chippewa Falls, we came to a spot where the city of Chippewa Falls needed to make one change from what our adopted tentative plan was. There were two wards that were in the city that were not connected. One ward was not connected, it was split by another one going through the middle of it. So there's one modification that was done. I don't know if we have a copy of that, but it was wards 13 and 14 in the city of Chippewa Falls, which are part of Supervisory Districts 20 and 21. There was a slight change between those two. There was a shift of a population of 91 from Supervisory District Number 20 going to Supervisory District Number 21. That kept us within the proper population ranges for the, all the supervisory districts. So we, we worked on it, and this is what that solution looks like between 20 and 21. And it was right in the southeast corner of Supervisory District Number 21. And that is the plan that we are presenting to you guys tonight.
Are there any questions for Dennis? Is he still up here? Okay. Is there any public comments at this time with issue? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on the redistricting. Alright, the second public hearing is on the Community Development Block Grant. We'll open the public hearing.
Thanks, good Chair. Jessica Olson-Bue will come up from the Housing Authority and walk through the full public hearing.
Thank you, Randy. Alright, so today, tonight, we'll be having a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant program. Also, you'll hear me calling it the CDBG program, for ease. And so we'll be talking about housing rehabilitation, homebuyer assistance, and emergency assistance programs. The purpose of this public hearing is twofold. To inform the public of the opportunity to apply for 2022 CDBG Small Cities Housing Program funds, and also to gain input on the proposed, on the needs of the region and the proposed activities for the application. Secondly, we'll report on the progress of the current regional CDBG housing grant and gain input from the public on that progress. The state of Wisconsin is currently accepting applications for the Regional Housing Program. The applicant must be a county and represent a service area comprised of at least nine counties. Chippewa County is eligible to apply as the lead county for the west-central housing region. The state estimates that there will be $17 million available through this competitive application cycle, which will be distributed among the seven regions, not necessarily equally, but based on a fair share allocation where the state considers a historical use of funds as well as program income or revolving loan funds that are available within the region. The application deadline is December 10th, 2021. This is just a breakout of the funding that's been awarded since the housing regions were formed and funded as such back in 2012, and we'll get into those in a little further, a little further on. Eligible CDBG activities. So the Community Development Block Grant funds are federal funds that are passed through the state of Wisconsin to small municipalities. Eligible activities or eligible funding through the CDBG program are for housing, planning, economic development, public facilities, and public facilities for economic development. This hearing is to discuss the housing programs. Okay, with the CDBG housing program, there's three main categories of home repair or rehabilitation assistance, homebuyer assistance, and then special housing projects or emergency assistance funds. Folks who are eligible to receive CDBG funds have to be income-eligible, which means they must be below, their household income must be below 80% of the county median income, which does vary based on the county that they live in and the number of household members as well. So with the home repair or rehabilitation assistance, these are deferred payment loans at zero interest. Payment is deferred until the resident no longer occupies the property as their primary place of residence. And these are for necessary repairs. It's not a remodel program. It's for needed and necessary repairs. So common things that we see are like a leaking roof, siding that it needs to be replaced, windows, accessibility improvements for persons with disabilities. This could be a ramp going into the home to allow for accessibility in a wheelchair, bathroom modifications to make a shower accessible, things of that nature, as well as well replacement, septic system replacement, water sewer laterals from the curb to the dwelling, to the residence. And then we also identify through lead risk assessments, lead paint, lead-based paint hazards. And those are remediated, and the funds used to do that are as grants to the homeowner versus, you know, other repairs would be as a loan. And then with the rehabilitation assistance funds can also be used for acquisition, demolition, and reconstruction. So, and if there are relocation costs for the family, those can be included as well for displacement. Funds are also available for homebuyer assistance. These are deferred payment loans to income-eligible families to assist with purchase of a home. Funds can't exceed 10% of the purchase price, and we can, it's a 50/50 match. The homebuyer needs to bring some money to the table, and we can use CDBG funds to match that down payment. And again, these are zero-interest deferred loans that are not due until it's no longer occupied. They do need to take homebuyer education, and we can include home repairs as part of the homebuyer assistance to bring the property up to housing quality standards after the closing. Emergency assistance funds are a little different. These are grants, solely grants to low and moderate-income owners and for repair or replacement of a dwelling that was damaged by a natural disaster. These funds can also be used for acquisition and demolition of dwellings that are unable to be repaired, and for housing replacement where if the damage is such that the cost to repair the home would exceed 50% of the value prior to the disaster event, then we would move forward with replacing the home altogether. So it's a little different how these funds are awarded. For the housing rehab and homebuyer assistance, this is through the competitive application process, funded regionally. As I mentioned, the regions must be made up of at least nine counties with one county identified as the lead, who then serves as the applicant on behalf of the region. The state of Wisconsin has seven housing regions, and funds in recent years have been made available every other year. For the special housing projects or emergency assistance funds through the CDBG program, these funds are only available when a disaster occurs, and municipalities would then enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Chippewa County as the lead county to submit application for these funds. Then the funds assist the victims of a date-specific event. So all the damage must be tied directly to a natural disaster. We work closely with local and state emergency government and often can coordinate these funds with the FEMA mitigation grants. Here you can see the seven housing regions in the state of Wisconsin. So the west-central region is there in yellow, and you see the star on Chippewa County, and that indicates that Chippewa is the lead county for the west-central region here in Wisconsin. Members of the region, you know, Barron Buffalo, Chippewa, Clark, Dunn, Eau Claire, Peppin Pierce, Oak, and St. Croix. You'll notice that excludes the portions of Chippewa and Eau Claire Counties that are the city of Eau Claire. And that's because the city is an entitlement community, and they receive their funds directly from the federal government rather than pass through the state of Wisconsin. Housing needs in our region. Home repair and homebuyer assistance, we continue to see a need for these things in our region. We also know that there is a need for rental housing rehabilitation, but with the CDBG funds, the administrative requirements of doing that on a regional level are, it's, it's very difficult. And so the west-central region has chosen to focus on owner-occupied repairs, and we'll get into, you know, the waiting list and things like that. So for low and moderate-income homeowners, existing housing rehabilitation. So the cost of materials continues to increase year after year with inflation and has been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. We're seeing that construction material costs are extremely volatile and can vary at times day by day. We recently saw a homeowner got a bid from a contractor for a water heater, and the bid was only good for five days. I mean, so costs are really fluctuating a lot. There's also a shortage of contractors in our region. This is not a new problem. It's an ongoing problem, and this does drive up the cost of labor. There's plenty of, of work to do and not enough workers. Also, poverty rates in the United Way Alice Report indicate that many homeowners will have a difficult time with maintaining their homes and taking care of repairs as they're needed. So often, it's not uncommon, I should say, for low-income homeowners to put off necessary repairs. The roof starts leaking, oh, I can't afford to deal with it. Maybe I don't know about the CDBG home repair program. And so the longer you put off those repairs, of course, the more damage is sustained to your home. In some instances, residential homes require demolition and reconstruction or replacement housing, which then does include temporary relocation and displacement of the family. Septic systems are more expensive. We see that very often, that folks are coming to us needing replacement of their septic system. It's difficult to issue orders for a family who can't afford to comply, and so we often reach out to local county zoning throughout the region to let them know about the program, and they can share the information with affected homeowners. And the current waiting list for the regional program, it has 90 households on it. So we continue to see a high need for this, for these funds. And folks do have to wait on a waiting list. If there are emergency repairs, we can prioritize those families if they have an emergency statement from a contractor. In the current grant, our loans are averaging 40, over $48,000. So you'll see as we get a little further on, the average loans throughout the history of the region, and they really have increased in this current grant. So with that average loan and the 90 applicants on the waiting list, that does indicate a need of more than $4 million in funds just to serve the current waiting list. Continue to receive applications every week. Homebuyer assistance, if you've tried, you know, if you've thought about selling your home lately or buying a home, you might notice that the home values have increased quite a lot. The home values are rising. The median value in the region is 166,300. You can see Clark County on the low end and St. Croix County on the high end. Low-to-moderate-income households find it difficult to purchase housing and keep their mortgage affordable. And so down payment assistance enables them to be able to purchase a home, and with the deferred payments, no interest, the mortgage payments can be more affordable. What we see is that homes that low-to-moderate-income buyers can afford often need repairs and maintenance and are not energy-efficient. The homebuyer program can also provide home repair funds, as I mentioned, after the purchase is complete. So I'd like to take some time to offer an opportunity to the public to provide any input on housing and community development needs. Hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, activities proposed in the new application. As I mentioned, we're proposing owner-occupied rehabilitation funds. We do have waiting lists. This would include demolition, reconstruction, or replacement housing on an as-needed basis, and the relocation costs for displaced families. Also, homebuyer assistance funds. We have ongoing requests for assistance, and these loans are smaller than the home repair loans. And also acquisition and rehabilitation on an as-needed basis. So this would improve the housing stock that would then be sold to low-to-moderate-income homebuyers, and this could include demolition and reconstruction or replacement housing as needed. Okay, I'll briefly go through the grants that have been awarded to Chippewa County as the lead for the region. The first one being 2012, the region received nearly $4 million. We were able to complete 146 home repair projects. The average loan at that time was $23,519. We did eight homebuyer assistance projects, and the average loan just over $14,000. This grant is closed. The 2014 grant, the region received just over $2 million. We completed 99 owner-occupied rehab projects, average loan being about $30,500, and two homebuyer assistance loans. So average loan there was $12,768. This grant is also closed. The 2018 housing grant award, received just over $2 million and completed 82 owner-occupied rehab projects. The average loan $29,875, and five homebuyer assistance loans. The average during that grant was much lower, $5,359. And that grant is also closed. The 2020 housing grant, this is the current grant that we're working on right now. The region received just over $2.5 million. Actually, it was less when it was awarded, and we've since gotten a contract amendment to receive an additional $500,000 due to the need that we have here in the region. We've expended over $1.5 million since November of 2020, when we began spending the 2020 grant funds, so just over a year. We've completed 32 home repair projects. The average loan $48,729. So you can see that there's been a significant increase in the average repair loan cost. We've not completed any homebuyer assistance loans to date with the current grant, and there has been displacement and temporary relocation of one family due to a large lead-based paint project. So the family did need to be relocated temporarily while the repairs were being completed. Okay, the 2020 Emergency Assistance Grant Award. There was a period of heavy rainfall last June in Pearson-St. Croix Counties, and also in Eau Claire County in July of 2020. So the region did receive $500,000 for the emergency assistance projects. We've had very low responses from affected homeowners and have expended only $30,288 to date with. And that was on three rehab projects, and the average loan was just over $10,000. We have two more that are in progress. Okay, is there any citizen input regarding the proposed application and/or progress on the current CDBG grants?
I have a question. How do people find out about the program when you say there's funds that are being utilized?
For the emergency assistance program? Yeah, so we worked closely with emergency management in those three counties. And when the disaster occurred, then they worked with 211 to gather information on affected homeowners. We had long lists of owners that had sustained damage from the event. I mean, close to 150 people on the list. And so we did direct solicitation to those families, phone calls, mailings, to get the word out about the program and kind of gather the initial estimates of who we thought might be income-eligible based on their certification, you know, self-certification, in order to get the award or the application put together and know, you know, what we wanted to request from the state of Wisconsin to meet the need. And since then, it's a lot, people have to provide a lot of information, and some people are just not comfortable providing all of that, even though the funds are available as a grant.
It says it's a loan, so are they paying this back?
Not the emergency assistance funds, but the CDBG housing for home repair and homebuyer assistance, yes, they're loaned. The exception to that would be if it's a lead-based paint hazard remediation. Those are, those funds are granted. So let's say you're a homeowner, an eligible homeowner, their windows test positive for lead hazard. It's a hazard, it's chipping paint around their windows, and it's lead-based paint. Then the cost of removing and replacing those windows would be granted. Otherwise, yes, the program funds are offered as a loan. So it creates a revolving loan fund. So in addition to the $1.5 million that's been expended of the grant funds, we've also had over $300,000 of loan payoffs. A lot of people are selling their homes now. And so as those funds are paid back, then we use those funds to help, to help, you know, additional families.
It's a grant coming in, so it never is paid back to the government?
Correct, correct. Okay, close the hearing.
Okay, we will close the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. Okay, we're gonna move on to reports with the county administrator review and update.
Thanks, good Chair. So I have two updates, and they both are regarding the ARPA funds. The first one is about the guidelines, procedures. And then the second one, I got Jim here from 247, who's gonna come up and explain some differences from what the resolution was to what their application was for the grant. So the first part, the guidelines, we talked about this. We brought this to the county board. We got approval for the process we wanted to follow. Unfortunately, we don't believe we're gonna get the final documents or the final plan until we're here in the first quarter of next year. until we're here in the first quarter of next year. So I don't think we can sit around and wait any longer. We have to get this within our process for 20, for next year. Obviously, we got CIP plans, we got budget, we got all those things needing to move forward. So what they're telling us is whatever we move forward with now, if it's into interim plan, it's good. If the interim plan, if it changes to what the new plan is, we just have to document that. And if you see down in my last paragraph, we did get confirmation that 5.7 million is on our lost revenue for this time around. Remember, we received a total, we're going to receive a total of 12.6 million, so we did receive 6.3 million of that, along with the 1.7 that the boards dedicated towards broadband. We're already at 7.4 million of funds we know we can utilize, either in the lost revenue category or the broadband. I think we're in good shape. So really, the question is, do you want me to bring something forward to you to actually change it? Got a couple options, or three options that I thought of. We could use this conversation in this document to document the change, or we can bring the change, I can wait, bring the change forward, and you guys can make a motion on that, or we can move forward, again, documenting this, and I can actually bring the change later. I just don't want to wait along, around any longer, because we just don't believe we're going to get that in a timely fashion, unfortunately. We were told 60 days, it was July 16th, I think, we had to have our final comments in. We were told 60 days, we'd get the final ruling, and WCA, the last conversation we had with them is that, like I said, they're saying first quarter of next year, which is going to put us way behind trying to get this to move forward. I'm just looking for your input and how you kind of want to proceed with this.
So we're getting 12 million, and we've got seven, little, seven and a half million roughly allocated.
We have seven and a half million, either it's going to be in the revenue loss category to 1.7, and then we have to do that lost revenue calculation again next year and the year after. So we feel pretty confident, we can't say 100% of anything probably right now, but we feel like we're going to be able to get everything in the lost revenue category eventually.
Because next year's lost revenue should be as much as this year's, correct?
Or more, yeah. Because it automatically goes up that 4.1%, and that compounds, so it's really 8.2%.
It should be okay.
We should, yeah, yep. And we will, we're already have, if we move forward in this process, the way we've talked about is doing it as a CIP. So you guys would only improve the first half of that, that funding anyways, so we won't receive the next funding till it's at May, May of next year, so we'll have time to adjust if there's some adjustments we have to do.
And we can use that lost revenue money for anything we want?
Yeah, we had a webinar today, so yeah, they're still talking about all that, but I won't say for everything, but vast majority of things we spend money on, yes. I'm hesitant to say absolutes on anything with this, with these categories, but we feel confident. Sikkage looked over our lost revenue calculations, that was our third party verification for the lost revenue, they feel good about it. So we feel really confident where we're at right now, as confident as we can be. If you're comfortable with us just documenting this, we'll put it in the minutes, we can move forward, or again, like I said, we can, you know, change the plan and bring it to you. So if you guys are comfortable moving forward, I'd start rolling this out to the department heads. Again, you remember the procedure, they got 30 days, and then they'll bring it to the policy committees, and we'll start that process. We're still working on the timeline, because we have bonding next year, we got a lot of things moving on. We've printed out all the timelines, and we're going to work on presenting a timeline to you guys, see if we either do it during the KIP project, do we do it before, do we do it after? We just haven't had time to kind of work that all through yet.
Do you want to let us let you know?
Right now would be great.
Yep.
Do you have a motion?
I think surprise Steel has something.
Yeah, I mean, you're asking to do something, us to do something, it really isn't on the agenda. This is a report rather than a business item, so we really can't vote on it and tell you which way we want you to go.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask for a motion, I'd ask where the consent is. We can definitely talk about that and give me direction on how you want me to move forward. We can, we can do that, unless Todd's not comfortable with that, but I don't see a problem with that.
You can do that?
It's under reports.
I'm just asking for direction on how to move forward. I wouldn't ask for a motion or anything like that. It just, it came up late, so there was no way to put anything together in order to get it here in time to do anything official.
Well, do you think maybe the better way to do is if there's any objection to what you're, to what you're planning to do?
That would work.
I mean, that would probably be easier, since this is a report, I mean, we can't take a vote, it's, it's easier if there's any objections. You've already laid out what the plan, what you plan to do. I think if there's any objections, they could be heard at this point.
Yeah, I just want to move forward.
Three different plans.
Well, my, my recommendation would be the, to document this through the minutes and just move forward with the plan. That's my recommendation.
So I think appropriate if there are any objections to the recommendation that they be made at this point.
How many have to object? 50%?
Well, I mean, if there's an objection, I think at this point, then you would, he would want to know what, what is, is there a different recommendation for him?
I'm just asking. I mean, I, I've never run into this, you know, where we're asking for the opinions of the county board on a report. Way to proceed from there.
Yeah, I brought them before, I've done it before under reports. Said there won't be official votes, but there'll be consent approvals or not, so you can do it.
I can't remember that.
I don't have any objection with that. I don't have an issue with that at all. I would prefer that it be, take the form of if there's some objection from the body, that be raised, and then the discussion go from there.
What's the next step from this?
Next step is I roll out to the department heads what the criteria is to use, and then they have 30 days to get that back to me, and then they got 30 days after that to get it to their committee.
So, okay, so then it goes to committee for approval?
Yeah, yep.
And it would come to the full county board for approval?
Oh, yeah. Yep, we're going to run it through, just like CIP, that's what we agreed on is from the board. So yeah, in the timeline, we have to, like I said, still work through the timeline of doing that, but yeah, everybody, but definitely have opportunity to, and we have public, you know, it's a whole process. We're going to open it up to the public and get input from them, open up to the townships, municipalities, get input from them, so none of that would change. I'm just asking if we can start moving forward, because if we don't...
To approach them?
Right, yeah, start the process.
So nothing would be approved without committee and board approval?
Correct.
Is there any other, is there any more objection to that? Does anybody? Okay.
All right. And then the second part of this is, so when the broadband grants were awarded, I went out and looked at what the award was compared to what the resolutions were, and they didn't exactly match up really for any of the, the three grants that are out there. So I was concerned that the state then award what we asked for, so I was finally able to get ahold of somebody at PSC, and, and they confirmed that they awarded whatever the grant that was, the application that was supplied to them, they did award it. So then I had to kind of work through a spreadsheet and see what the differences were from what the resolution was to what their applications were. So I was able to do that. Two other, you know, we had Blumer and Natera, they're, were a little different, but their differences were the either added locations, or they added more funding to their, to their application, which I didn't think is an issue with us. But when I looked at 24sevens, their amount of locations that were on their application to the amount of locations that were in the resolution were different. So I called them and asked them to come explain that, so Jim's here, and he's going to explain that, and then I got some, again, a question at the end of that that we can talk through.
My name is Jim Kuslik, I'm with 247 Telcom. I was here on July 20th and reported to you that we were requesting funding from Chippewa County to fund 609 locations in two projects, in the town of Wheaton and the town of Howard. In the applications that we submitted to the PSC, we, we actually had 477 locations between the two projects. That's a difference of 132 locations. The reason for that difference is, in the applications, we could only include eligible locations for funding. The eligible locations would be locations that are not receiving 25 meg down or 3 meg up. So when we drew our maps, we had a project area. Basically, what we did is because West Wisconsin Telcom, our parent company, has a footprint in both the town of Wheaton and the town of Howard, we took a look at what was remaining in each of those towns, and we drew a polygon around the remaining area. But we had to pull out any ineligible locations for the application. So it was a combination of drawing the maps and taking from the broadband maps that are available from the PSC and coming up with a, with a number. So what we wanted to report to you at the time on July 20th is, we wanted to know, wanted you to know that we're going to be serving all 609 locations, and that's what I'm here to tell you tonight. So the reason that we'll be able to do that is, we're going to have to build the infrastructure to get to those unserved locations. We're most likely going to be going by or near the locations that were not eligible for funding through the PSC. So, so we've, we've been awarded the grant, we're going to be able to build these projects, and we will extend fiber to any locations, including the 132 locations that were not eligible for funding. We'll build to those out of our own funds. That'll, that'll come out of 247 Telcom's pocket. So no additional requests for funds from the county, no additional funds requested from the state or the towns. That'll come from us. So I, I think that's, that's the gist of the explanation. I don't know if you had any questions on, on that.
Any questions, anybody? Supervisor Steel, yeah, I'm sorry.
I gotta get this straight. You requested us to, what was it, 300 and some thousand total?
Yep.
And you said at that time you were going to hook up 609, and now it's 132 less, is it, or something like that? Why is it going to cost you extra, and you got, what? I guess my, my point is, we got, we give, give the money, pledge the money to service all those people, and now I'm hearing, oh, with that money, we're going to service only this many people. But we'll eat up the difference in cost. Well, to me, there shouldn't be a difference in cost, there should be less of a cost.
So, so the cost of the project that we submitted in the application was to build the infrastructure to pass all locations in the project area. What we didn't get funding for was to build that lateral off of the main line for 132 locations. So we're going to, we're going to have the infrastructure in place, the main line construction down the highways to build and get fiber to the home to all these locations. What we didn't get the funding for was to build the drops into the 132 homes, because they were technically not eligible under the grant program. So the cost, the cost for the project remained the same, but that additional, I guess we would say, there's still an additional cost to build to those 132 locations. But the cost that we reported on July 20th was, included the, just the eligible locations at the time. So the, the project cost didn't change from what we submitted in the application.
It doesn't, I don't know, maybe I'm, if, if, in other words, you're going to, you're going to pick up the cost, your company, for not dropping the lines into 132 locations. Okay.
For the, for those that request it, we will build to them, so it's going to be available to them if they choose. Some of, some of these locations, and so it's, it's, it's based on the broadband maps, so we had to look at the broadband maps, which are inaccurate, because they're based on, they're based on census blocks. So if you have one customer in a census block that's served by a provider, that entire census block is lit up as being served. So that's how we had to do our calculations, was based on the broadband map, because that's, that's the only information we had available to us. We know that there's going to be locations that are not truly served, but we're still going to pick up the cost to get to them. So we assume that they will contact us to request service.
Any other questions out there? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it took me, I don't know, three, four days to figure it out, with several conversations, so it is a little confusing. I think Jim did a good job on her, explaining it. So in the resolution that was passed on line 96, this is the only difference between what the application was to the resolution, but after, I'll give you a second. So where it says, whereas the total number of locations that would be served by this broadband expansion would be 609, that statement is correct. I thought when I first put this memo out that we'd have to change that, but after talking with Todd and talking with Lori, obviously, because we're hypersensitive about making sure all our documentation's correct, because we're using this for the ARPA funds, we're fine with leaving the resolution the way it is. We'll get a confirming correspondence from 247, just explaining that difference, and we feel like we'll be fine then. But I, I thought the county board needed to hear the difference, in case if anybody ever hears anything or anything different than what's presented here, I always want to make sure the county board's up to date, so. Correct. Any questions for me?
Okay, thanks, Ren. All right, we have no department reports and no general reports, so we're going to move on to business items, and Jackie will guide us through this.
Resolution number 48-21, resolution to authorize the submission of an application for Community Development Block Grant Funds on behalf of the West Central Wisconsin Housing Region. Now therefore, be it resolved that the county board of Chippewa County does hereby approve and authorize the preparation filing of an application for CDBG funds for the above projects, and be it further resolved that the county board chair is hereby authorized to sign all necessary documents on behalf of Chippewa County and the lead county for the West Central Wisconsin Housing Region, and be it further resolved that authority is hereby granted to program administrator, Jessica Olson-Buett, and the Chippewa County Housing Authority to take the necessary steps to prepare and file the appropriate application for funds under this program in accordance with this resolution, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do we have a motion approved, so we can get it on the floor?
Approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Jessica, here the...
Discussion, questions?
You want to just give it?
Yep. Okay, Jessica will answer those.
Okay, so this would be the application... Okay, so this would be the application that we were speaking about at the public hearing, and we just, you know, I described the proposed funding activities that would be conducted, so I gladly take any questions that anyone has.
Yep, Supervisor Hall.
Just out of curiosity, do the other counties also have to support this in a resolution form?
Yes, they did initially, when the region was first formed. So yes, with each application cycle, we submit those authorizing resolutions to join the housing cooperative.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're gonna vote with our little function here. All in favor?
10 yes, 0 no.
Okay, resolution passes, thank you. Okay, second resolution.
Resolution 49-21, resolution to approve Chippewa County tax levy to be collected in 2022. I'm just reading this, I title only.
Okay, I'm sorry, need a motion to get it on the floor, please?
I'll make a motion, put it on the floor.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? Okay, discussion.
So this resolution is confirming what you approved on Thursday, is required by state statute, obviously, to have a resolution. Total tax levy will be 20,639, 500, 639,520.84.
Any questions on this before we vote? Any? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, please vote. Okay, releasing.
10 yes, 0 no.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to the next resolution, 5021.
Resolution 50-21, resolution to approve the county supervisory redistricting plan.
Okay.
Now therefore be it resolved that the attached supervisory redistricting plan map is hereby approved to take effect with the April 2022 county board supervisor election. Boarded into the county board by the redistricting committee.
Need a motion again on the floor? Okay, I need a motion to get on the floor, please.
I saw a move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, discussion.
It's been a long process, right?
Yes.
Short amount of time. So this is what was presented in the public hearing, Doug's here and Dennis is here again, obviously, for any questions that the board may have.
No question, but thank you for doing a lot of hard work in a little bit...
In a little bit of time.
It's amazing.
I'd also like to publicly thank the redistricting committee. I mean, there was a lot of information coming out in a short amount of time, so we appreciate everybody participating in the process. Everybody worked really well together. I can tell you that has not been the same across the state, so we appreciate all the cooperation with everybody.
I, I would like to thank them as well, not just as a board member, but also as from the city of Chippewa Falls, of working with the city so closely and making that kind of work pretty seamlessly. It was kind of, really kind of amazing that it all worked out so, so in a shorter period of time.
We have to do something like this again, Doug and Dennis up here to spend some time, but you guys did a good job.
I'll be gone next time.
Okay, any questions on that? Any? Okay, let's vote.
9 yes, 1 no.
Okay, resolution passes. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next resolution of 421.
This is our ordinance 4-21, and this is the first reading.
Yeah, so if I could speak on it. So this is really just putting the numbers to all the districts. I would be asking for our first motion to be a wave, wave of the rules, because we need to pass this tonight, so I would ask for that motion.
Can I have a motion to suspend the rule?
I move to suspend rules for the ordinance.
Okay.
I'm in. A second.
I have a second? Okay. Discussion? I'm sorry?
Did the second?
Supervisor Hall.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we need a two-thirds vote to suspend rules.
Okay. I'm sorry, with this, or?
I didn't have that mark, two-thirds, okay.
Oh, okay.
I believe we need seven.
Is it, Todd, is it two-thirds of who's here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How many do I have?
I'm writing on.
Six. Okay.
We're gonna vote on...
We're gonna vote.
Suspension of the rules.
Yep, okay.
Means waving the timeline.
Second reading.
Waving the second reading.
Waving the second reading.
Yep. Okay, release.
10 yes.
Okay, I guess we made our two-thirds.
And then, obviously, the next motion would be just to approve the ordinance as submitted.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second? More? Discussion, questions? 10 years, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, ready? Okay, please vote. Okay, release.
9 yes, 1 no.
Okay, resolution passes. Uh, we move on to the next agenda items for future consideration. I say would be the best to get ahold of Chair Gullickson or Randy, and we can get those on the agenda, if anybody has anything. Okay, next one is a motion adjourned. Got a motion adjourned, I got a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.